This is not a recess of the Planning Commission, so this is just a regular meeting. I am Commissioner Steinberger, Chair. Tonight, the Commission will consider the following items. County Manager's Proposed Capital Improvement Plan FY 2025-2034, the CIP, use permit for the preservation and renovations of the Barcroft apartment buildings, numbers 47 and 48. Before we begin, I would like to share a few logistical points for all participants joining the meeting remotely and in person. For presenters and speakers joining us through Microsoft Teams, please keep your phones and other... Thank you. For presenters and speakers joining us through Microsoft Teams, please keep your phones and other electronic devices muted until you are called upon by the clerk. Please turn off the sound to any devices around you to minimize interference. Please keep your cameras off until the clerk announces your name to speak. When called upon, you must unmute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon that is in the meeting command bar at the top of the screen. The moderator, neither the moderator nor the clerk have the ability to unmute your mic. Once you have spoken, please re-mute your mics and turn your cameras off. If you are dialing in by phone to join the meeting, press star six to unmute. Public speakers will be called upon by the clerk at an assigned time. Pre-registration and email confirmation to speak at tonight's hearing was required. We are not able to accommodate additional speakers. All speakers, virtual and hybrid, will receive two minutes to comment as an individual. Only representatives of county board-appointed advisory group committee and or commission will receive a three-minute comment period. A timer will be displayed on the screen of speaking virtually, and speakers in person will follow the timer stationed on the podium. Audio of tonight's meeting is available via phone. If commissioners, presenters, or speakers lose internet connectivity, please reconnect by phone. However, if you are dialing in by phone and unable to see the screen, we will provide you an audible 30-second warning to wrap up your comments. You will be muted when your time has expired. The meeting chat is active for presenters or commissioners who need technical assistance only. Please do not use the meeting chat for discussion, public comment, questions about agenda items, or requests for further information. All public comments must be shared verbally for the record during the assigned public testimony period. Tonight's meeting will be available for review through the YouTube and Microsoft Teams platforms in real time. The links have been provided on the Planning Commission website. The meeting will also be available for review with closed captioning on Comcast Xfinity Channels 25 and 1085, Verizon Vias Channels 39 and 40, 24 to 48 hours after the adjournment of the meeting. Lastly, this is a public forum. Tonight's meeting will be recorded and posted to the county's website via a link to YouTube as stated. All information associated with tonight's meeting, whether written or spoken, is subject to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act requirements. Mr. Pfeiffer, please call our first item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item this evening is the County Manager's Proposed Capital Improvement Plan fiscal year 2025 through fiscal year 2034. And I believe we have staff Karen Tally online.
Wonderful. Ms. Tally, when you're ready, you may be muted currently.
Thank you. Jason Fries will be starting, and I will complete the presentation.
Thank you, and good evening. Karen, you've got it up there. So we're going to go through this rather quickly. I think we have about 10 minutes. We have about 17 slides, so we'll be as quick as we can. So I'll go ahead and just start it off. If you can go to the first slide, Karen. Thank you. So the county manager presented to the county board, the CIP, that totals about $4.5 billion. We proposed it last week. This includes, and you see here on the slide, a range of different programs and program categories. So within the general county government area, there's about $3.3 billion over a 10-year period, which is fiscal 2025 through 2034. This covers a full portfolio of services and infrastructure that the county provides. It's from transportation and roads, parks and recreation, public art, the county's libraries, how we travel, as well as our government facilities. There's also a combined $1.2 billion that covers both our stormwater program and our utilities program, water and sewer infrastructure. So we go to the next slide. So in developing the CIP, there's a number of principles that we consider. So we work to balance between maintaining what we have with including new projects. We tried to approach that in a way that was measured, as well as affordable and able to be implemented within our existing resources. So unlike other jurisdictions, we are a full-service community in that we maintain most of our own roads. We don't have regional park authorities that manage our parks. And we are also responsible to manage and invest in our infrastructure, which that includes 89 county facilities, about 2,000 miles of county roads, 500 miles of underground utilities, as well as our libraries and fire stations. The theme of the CIP was responding to the various changes that were experienced in our community, as well as building resiliency and flexibility to continue having a sustainable and viable environment. So we can, next slide, please. So want to talk about the major assumptions in this year's CIP. Construction inflation, I think you all probably know that that, as well as supply chain issues, have been a concern over the past couple of years. We've included a 4% inflation across the board for our projects. This may not be right, actually pretty sure it is not right, but it is a higher assumption that we have provided, that we have forecasted in the past. And so for some projects that are maybe further along in design, there may be more current assumptions that may vary. But in general, for projects that are in the planning years, 4% is what we used. We also use a flat 5% interest rate on all of the bonds we plan over the 10-year period, which is a slight variation from what we have done in previous CIPs as a response to the rising yield curves in the municipal bond market. And then there's also regulatory changes. So I think you all know, like with the utilities fund, there's a new PFAS issuance from the feds that we'll have to address in the future. So we have some projects with water pollution control plan currently, but the intent there is to respond to some of the regulatory changes in our baby in the future, also some additional work to be done there. So if we go to the next slide, slide six, want to talk about major changes since our last CIP. So we are intending to maintain the preservation and affordability of Barcroft, which I believe is on your agenda later today as well. And with that, you know, there's a $120 million line of credit that we have, which facilitated the acquisition there. So that was a new change from the last CIP. And it's, you know, with the rise in interest rates, when we, I think when we first took it out, it was 25 base, a quarter of a percent interest, extremely low. Now we're talking 6%. So it's been a rather rapid rise on the short end of the yield curve. So that's having some pressure on our debt capacity and availability within AHIF. So as we work through the planning process for Barcroft, we have to keep that affordability for debt in mind. Over the past couple of years, we've also been working collaboratively on mental health and substance abuse in the community and the region that's been going on. So you'll see in the CIP a potential partnership with Virginia Hospital Center at the Carlin Springs Road Site. That partnership will provide touch for shared parking, as well as improvements connectivity to Long Branch Nature Center. And I'm sorry, missed the line. But that's a new project with near-term investments over the next few years. And on the previous slide, we had talked about being prepared in the various changes in the community and providing resilience across many sections of the community. There's funding in this 10-year CIP for situational awareness intelligence unit. We currently don't have like a singular place for, you know, to respond to large events or emergencies. So it'll be a place to respond to those major events, be they environmental or social events. We also have continued investments in the water supply redundancy and connections, and then funding for a resilience hub at Lover Run that can support a community in an emergency event. Next slide, please. So here, wanted to show, and these are the slides we typically show with our, with planning of the debt in the CIP. So what we show here is that over the 10-year period, and this is going to be pretty similar to what we have in prior CIPs, we're in the 88% to 9% range right now on the short end of the CIP. But with the planned 10-year plan of projects, we do get up to about 9.8% fiscal '31 and '32, below the 10%. But it is, you know, it is tight, but it leaves us a little bit of room to respond to if there are shifts in either interest rates or some project overruns. We may have some capacity there to afford additional debt. And the other thing is that as we, you know, it's a 10-year plan, and as you see in the front end, we're well below, as we usually get towards those years where it's near 10%, we tend to, either through delays in projects or through... Sorry, I didn't notice that. Okay, it's on. Or either through delays in projects, or just through either being able to issue the debt at a lower cost, we end up being below what is projected here. So it's a plan that we can react to by the time we get to those years if we need to. And one thing to note, you see the footnote below, we did receive schools' proposed CIP in time. So we have included their option two for the Career Center site, which is, I would call it their middle ground on the costs for their CIP and for the work they plan to do at that site. Next slide, please. So here, wanted to show the other, we have other policies as well related to issuance of general obligation bonds. These are the three here. So we have a per capita debt to income that should be no greater than 6%. We are comfortably within that. We peak at 5.4%. Outstanding debt as a percentage of our taxable value of a property, no greater than 3%. We're about half of that. We peak at 1.5%. And then this is one we're really focused on, which is growth in debt service over a 10-year period in the future should be consistent with our 10-year of historical looking backwards. And when we look at 10 years ago, the prior 10 years, we're at about 4.4% growth. And our combined county schools' debt service growth in the future is about 3.6%. A little bit higher on the county side, a little bit lower on the school side. Combined basis, both of those were below and within those ranges. Next slide, please. So talking specifically about the referenda, that'll be on the fall, the November ballot. Through the county's typical three categories, we have community infrastructure, parks and recreation, and metro and transportation. We have a total of $174.4 million. And then utilities is looking to request $14 million. And to, give me one second. So on the county side, 76 million in community infrastructure. This is projects such as the Arlington Neighborhoods Program, ports, police building improvements, some site work, demolition and planning at the Carlin Springs Site, that public safety consolidation that we mentioned earlier, as well as other general county infrastructure and maintenance projects. 26 millions for parks, that includes Drew Park and three urban parks, emerging uses and nature resiliency, trail and bridge modernization, as well as parks land acquisition, transportation. Majority of that is for metro, $44 million, and 22 million for paving, and then smaller amounts for other smaller transportation projects throughout the county. Then again, utilities fund, the 14 million, the majority of that is for our contributions to the Washington Aqueduct, which is the county's main source of water for the county. We'll have a full discussion on each of these, the projects, and these amounts being put on the bond referenda in our CIP work sessions over the next few weeks. Next slide, please. And so here, you know, we continue to advance environmental resiliency goals. Resiliency investments are proposed in almost all CIP program areas and recognize clear intersection between resiliency and climate. So we show on the right, there's some transit investments. We have a transition of our existing fleet of CNG buses to battery electric buses and acquisition of land for future bus storage and charging infrastructure facilities. We have, we're investing smart and flexible energy resilience and collaborating with community partners to invest in mental health resilience. An expanded program to install solar panels on county facilities is also included. We also have vehicle charging infrastructure, as well as resiliency hub at Lover Run. Community centers serve as a public during events such as a long-term power disruption. And then lastly, the CIP provides new investments for backup water supplies to protect the county's source water. And with that, that's my very, very quick first half of the CIP, and I'm going to hand it off now to Karen to take the second half.
Thank you, Jason. And so Jason has touched on a couple of these projects, but this slide shows the major projects, the major new projects in our CIP this year. So obviously, new projects typically show up in the latter years of the CIP. But for us, some projects are in the near term, and those were not included in our prior CIP. In facilities, several new projects have been added with some developer funding. We've had the opportunity for a new library in Crystal City. And then along Langston Boulevard will enhance the Lee Community Center Site. As we look to the proposed partnership with the Virginia Hospital Center, we've included dollars for the anticipated phased redevelopment and efficient use of the Carlin Springs Site. And also, Jason spoke a little bit about the situational awareness unit and the Lover Run resiliency hub. Parks and Recreation has planning in several areas of the county and some new opportunities to enhance some spaces underutilized in their current state. And information technology, the need for enhanced security, the desperate need to modernize some human service applications as the size and scope of centralized case management becomes more important, along with several public safety needs. And finally, in transportation, the accelerated need to transition in zero-to-zero emission buses and the ability to plan for microtransit alternatives. So I won't go into a lot of detail with all of our major initiatives, but just to hit on a couple of the highlights on this slide, we have investments in utilities totaling about $880 million. These are, of course, essential services provided to the community. There's $334 million invested in stormwater related to both maintaining what we have and making necessary improvements. Close to $98 million in the Arlington Neighborhoods Program, which, as you know, provides variety of street improvements, traffic management, park enhancements, and many other amenities across the county. And then, of course, nearly $400 million in investment in metro as part of our regional commitments. Of the 20, I'm sorry. This slide provides some context to our sustainable multimodal transportation system. There's everything here for maintaining many of our roads, which very few jurisdictions do for themselves, to the Metro Rail stations, the bus system, vehicular and pedestrian bridges, and our bicycling programs. You can see this is a very comprehensive program with over $1.9 billion in investments over the 10-year period. Of the 26 square miles in the county, we have 950 acres of parkland. As you may know, our park system was once again ranked within the top five in the nation and the top 100 cities. There's much here that requires ongoing maintenance, but also emerging needs in the community. There's everything here from natural resource conservation areas, parks, playgrounds, sport courts for a wide array of sports, community gardens, picnic shelters, dog parks, bridges, and many other amenities. Investments in parks totals $309 million. Again, providing some context, this infographic shows the county is responsible for maintaining and sustaining 89 county-owned buildings in service with over 2.3 million square feet of space. These buildings facilitate a wide range of uses from public safety to transit, libraries, parks, human services, and more. Investment in our facilities areas is a little over $383 million. And our proposed 10-year CIP in technology is over $207 million. Technology is, of course, at the core of everything we do and nearly all the services that we provide. Our investments include replacement cycles for core infrastructure equipment, for the network and endpoint devices for our employees, and in some cases, the public, as well as the enterprise and line of business systems that allow us to do our day-to-day work. Almost 3,200 Arlington residents provided input in their top priority areas for major infrastructure investments from the CIP through outreach to our nonprofit partners at pop-up engagement events, advertised on art buses, through various forms of social media, and all of that helped to inform the manager's proposed CIP. And finally, in closing, we have our timeline. We have a number of work sessions between the board, the manager, and the departments with anticipated adoption at the July County Board Meeting, following with the filing of the referenda items with the Circuit Court, culminating with the voters on Election Day. And with that, we are open for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment?
We have no public comment.
Okay. Do we have any commissions that wish to be heard?
We do not.
Okay. The matter is now with, did any of the Planning Commission commissions hear this item separately?
Nope.
We heard transportation to hear it, but it was information only, of course.
Only any report you want to give.
The only concern we have, which is mine also, is the transition to, of art buses to all-electric, that we feel very strongly that it's premature, that it's a waste of money, and it's also not environmentally the best path. We very much feel that keeping with CNG for now, exploring maybe other options, but it is way too soon to move to battery-only.
Okay. Thank you for that report. Did any other Planning Commission subcommittees hear this? Okay. Then the matter is now with the Planning Commission. Does anyone want to, from a topic standpoint, are there topics that folks would like to suggest for discussion? Or we can sort of have free for all on the topic? Okay. We will have free for all. The hands that I saw first were Commissioner Berkey, Commissioner Ware, and then Commissioner Robertson. So that's, and then Commissioners Striner. I will try to remember that order, and then I'll call in more people. Okay, Commissioner Berkey.
No, I just raised my hand to indicate my strong agreement with the concerns raised by the Transportation Commission. There's a lot of funding in here for other transportation enhancements, but if we're thinking about climate, the fundamental issue is how do we get folks to take less car trips and more trips on transit, other modes of transportation? And I'm just really concerned that as a county, we're not thinking about that as a goal, and we're reaching for something that's just more practically easy, which is to say if we spend a lot of money on buying new equipment, that's going to solve the problem, where really, we need fundamental culture shifts. We need to make it easier for people to take buses, which means shorter wait times, which means investment in human capital, as well as our physical infrastructure. That should be our focus as it pertains to climate and transportation. Electricification of buses or other means of fueling them is fine. It is certainly a laudable goal, but should not be our primary focus as it pertains to our bus fleet. Thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Ware.
Same point, but to really stress that the single most important thing that can be done for transport, for improving transportation is increasing the reliability and the availability of service. And we are sacrificing that operational goal by spending fundamentally limited and scarce dollars on capital acquisitions. The money should be going to the operations aspect. And to add to that point, as, maybe this is just for people's benefit, but as APS is considering something similar, it is different when it comes to school buses because art buses are in service all day. And so they don't have an opportunity to go back and charge. And that is one of the reasons that it is still so costly and still so difficult for city buses to provide the kind of benefits for climate-related, carbon-related issues that school buses are able to provide. Just because unlike school buses, city buses cannot take six hours off in the middle of their shift to go plug in. Thanks.
You're welcome. I'm not at the moment hearing anything that I think are questions for county staff yet. County staff, please understand, I will refer to you all for responses if and when I feel that there's something that is actually a question. We're not there yet. Commissioner Robertson, then Commissioner Striner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to ring an alarm bell that I rang frequently on the Fiscal Affairs Advisory Commission. I'm a budget geek, which makes me easily the most boring person on the Planning Commission. But I care very much about the county's budget, and I just want to tell the staff, I think they've done a great job on this SIP. I continue to be concerned about the level of funding for responding to stormwater issues. Between the last SIP and this one, as best I can tell, there's an increase of less than 1%. And the United States and the global community is continuing to do a pretty poor job in controlling emissions sufficiently to avoid the temperature increases that will continue to create dramatic climatic consequences. I'll raise an example that scared me when I was on the FAC. The absolutely spectacular stormwater storage facility under the athletic field at Cardinal Elementary School, $18 million, and is sufficient to store 4 million gallons of stormwater, is sufficient to deal with a 10-year storm. The 10-year storms of, you know, 2019 are going to be the two-year storms of the next decade. And I'm afraid if we're not spending more money on dealing with this, and I think this actually falls into the, a sweet spot for the Planning Commission because stormwater management, if it's not done properly, is going to have catastrophic effects on commercial development in Arlington County. So I guess I kind of have a question for the staff, and that is whether during the development of this, there was any discussion about whether the total for stormwater management... Oh, but, and the other element of this, of course, is stream quality. Our MS4 and TMDL permit only gets harder in the next five-year plan. You know, we have to go from doing quite a bit to doing, so much so that it boggles the imagination. And we won't be able to meet those water quality limits if we're not spending enough money. I'm much more concerned about the funds that are, even though vastly greater, the funds that are allocated towards stormwater management than the stream quality and water quality. Anyway, my question is, was there consideration of a larger figure that during the necessary hard decision-making made us cut some other level back to 334 million? I don't need an answer this evening, but I'd love to hear back from the staff at some point about that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I heard a question for staff, so if you would like to initiate a response now, the floor is yours.
Yeah, and I think, I think we'll, we'll go ahead and get back to you. I know that, I believe the stormwater program's funding and their 10-year plan was based off of their projection of, based on their current rates and projected debt. I think, as you all know, it's the large increase that the stormwater program had in its funding and, you know, the first referenda that we put out there in 2020. You know, it's still ramping up. And so, well, I'll have to take it back to, you know, the program managers in that department and find out. But there wasn't, there wasn't anything, I'd say, from the county of, say, reducing the funding or anything else planned that came to finance. I think it's more so that the planning was around what they could afford within the financial plan they have, given the rates that they, the revenues that they currently have with the stormwater fee, which is now the utility fee.
And what I add to that is also taking into consideration ability to execute the projects that they have in their portfolio. So that definitely was consideration. This CIP wasn't that much of an increase, but the previous CIP was a huge increase of about over $300 million, I believe, from the CIP before that. So being able to execute what they have proposed is a big part of it as well. But like Jason said, we'll get back with response from the program.
Thank you. Commissioners Striner is next, then back to Commissioner Ware.
All right. Well, I'm not the, he's not the only budget nerd here. This is my day job, so I was really having fun today. I have like four rapid-fire questions. Is that all right? I'm not going to build a room.
That's fine.
All right, cool. So first off, does this CIP cover the metro shortfall in the fiscal cliff that we've kind of been facing as an area here?
So far, there's no fiscal cliff on the capital side, but I think, as you know, that on the operating side, there was the large cliff. We were fortunate that the governor of Virginia, even though he initially struck a match to the big gap that was hitting fiscal '25, he did include a 50% match of that significant increase for two years. So we got that on the operating side, which should hopefully at least defer... There's a risk that if the operating, one of the, one of the tricks WAMADA is using to balance their budget is shifting a lot of preventative maintenance over to capital. What that's doing is crowding out the normal capital activity that they have within their 10-year plan. They're projected, I believe it is by fiscal '28, to potentially run out of funding for those basic projects that they have in their CIP and have a funding gap. So to the extent that there is not a new funding source identified, and/or to the extent that the Commonwealth does not, after these first two years, agree to match, say, a 50% level of this dramatic rise, it could put pressure on the capital funding, but we have currently assumed that it's going to go by. Right now, we have this 3% annual escalation in our capital costs. We're, that's what our 10-year plan has right now. However, our next CIP, depending on what happens in the next 24 months, our depending on what happens in the next 24 months, our next CIP, two years from today, if we're coming to you, may be different depending on what happens. But I know there is, you know, the Council of Governments and folks that there's regional groups coming together to try to address the issue on the operating side. So that's still early on in its infancy, but the hope is that there will at least be some type of consensus and some kind of push for a resolution on the operating side.
Okay, awesome. And then, so second, how rosy were the tax revenue calculations in this, in this sort of projection for the next 10 years?
I would say, still a little bit on the lower side. So again, you know, we had that 10-year projected how the county has grown over the past decade, and we've been growing at greater than 4% a year. So what we have in our projections is 2.5% for the next year, rising up to only a 3% is our max. So I'd say it's conservative. Is it extremely conservative? No. But I'd say it's not, it's not overly ambitious as well, that we're expecting about, you know, combined is probably about 2.9% over the 10-year period. That's, that's what our projections include.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's smart. You don't want to have too much wishful thinking there. There was a project for the Lee Center. I was curious what was planned for that. And again, you don't have to get back to me tonight on this one. That's a little more in the weeds. But I know members of the community are concerned about that project, and I was wondering if you had any insight on that.
It's not demolition. No, there was a typo in the original plan from the prior CIP, so it is not demolition. I believe it's just a planning process is what's in the, is what's in the CIP care. Do you know more about that one?
Right. The planning process is really just within the existing footprint of the current facility. But there will be a community process. Well, it will, there will be some, some planning with the community around that.
Perfect. And my, my last one, thank you, Madam Chair, would be that I noticed there were a lot of single space parking meters, and this is more of a comment. I know that multi-space meters are cheaper to maintain, and I was wondering, and just, I'll put it out there, that if you have time to think about converting some of those single space to multi-space meters, so that way you could sort of cut down on the maintenance of those kind of assets. I know that's something that saves localities money over time. Not, it's not going to change the tide of the budget here, but every little bit helps, what I've found.
We can take that, the transportation folks.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Ware.
I have a question, but I suspect that what we will find out in response to your last question is that it has to do with the Performance Parking Pilot Study. But I don't, that's, that's, that's a really wild speculation. So I, you know, take it with a grain of salt until we find out further. A question about, going back to the stormwater management issue, has there been any, has there been any consideration or discussion, or would it be worth considering or discussing a wider adoption of roundabouts and bumpouts, both as adjuncts to the Vision Zero program and traffic mitigation and control measures, but also as opportunities for rain gardens and, and for pervious space? That seems like something that would benefit, could potentially have benefit for two very serious pressing issues. Thank you.
We can definitely take that back. I know that, definitely, you know, that stormwater has Green Street projects where they do rain gardens in the median. I guess that could potentially, if it's not already part of their plan, we could talk to them about your comment with it being part of roundabouts with a collaboration with the transportation program.
Thanks. And to be clear, bumpouts as well, right? We do a lot of, a lot of issues with pull-through and uncontrolled intersections with pull-through collisions, or because of visibility issues, often because people are parking past the no parking line. There's a, there's a, a number of, of related issues that would be solved were we to stop, were we to move away from just having signs to curb and instead actually building out with hardscape, the, and streetscape, the, using the cross-section, deal with it, and that needn't all be concrete. That could potentially be an opportunity for rain gardens, not in the median as well. Sorry, that was less elegant than it needed to be, but thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ware. Commissioner Lynn Tommy, and anyone after Commissioner Lynn Tommy? Okay.
Yeah, first of all, thank you for the investment that you're projecting for the Langston Boulevard, both the Art Center and other projects along there. It's been a long time coming, so I'm very gratified to see that now in the budget. I have, I also want to associate myself with Commissioner Ware's comments about the Streets Program, how that actually really should be matched with or married up with our other priorities, such as stormwater management. It can be done as part of the, when we do the repaving and curbing and ADA ramps, that we should also add in bumpouts and stormwater management as part of the regular program. We raised this at Transportation Commission at the last meeting, as part of the Vision Zero, because all of these things interrelate. Finally, I, your chart, where had the debt ratio in outer years approaching 10%, going 9.7, 9.8, is a bit of a concern because it doesn't give much of a cushion for the unexpected. And we're certainly moving into an era where the unexpected has to be expected. You know, witnessed the pandemic, witnessed the huge storm, you know, the rainstorm of a couple of years ago. These sort of events have fiscal consequences, and we're really racing on stormwater to get ahead of the curve, and I'm not sure we're going to be able to do that, just because it takes so long to get these things done. Being so close to our debt cap, is that something you're concerned about? Like I said, I don't think it leaves us a lot of cushion for some unanticipated event that we have to then step up and pay for. Thank you.
I would respond that. I would be more, it's an intentional that we are near that 10%. If you look back historically over the past 5, 10 CIP cycles that we have done, it's an intentional because there is a balance between trying to do as many projects as we can feasibly do within the constraints that we believe are what will keep us as a AAA-rated jurisdiction, in terms of, you know, the things we can control, which is a level of debt, debt service, and those pieces versus the demographic information we can't. So we always try to plan to afford as many projects as possible, but within those constraints, if that, if we get to that 10%, say, in the next two or three fiscal years, that's where we start getting concerned of, are we, are we confident in our projections? Are we, do we think there's any risks there? But if you always notice, it's typically in the second half of a CIP where we see get to that level. And if we felt like we were getting there too quickly, we would probably reevaluate if things have changed, if there's more risk, if we think that there are, like you said, potentially project overruns or issues where we don't have what we consider a comfortable cushion. So from my perspective as a debt manager, I would say that I'm not necessarily concerned of it this time, but it's something that every time we do a CIP, we are looking at it, and we are, you know, looking at the underlying assumptions. Are the interest rates correct? Are the, are the timing of the projects correct? Are the revenue assumptions correct? That, the question asked earlier, are we too ambitious with those, with the growth there? So we always reevaluate those to make sure that we, we can stay within that level. And we would trim it if we got too close and we didn't feel comfortable getting there. So, so we're comfortable right now.
Thank you.
Okay. I will acknowledge myself for a comment then. I think the feedback and some of the media first commentary on the plans for the buses and moving that to, you know, an all-electric fleet, I think that we've heard some really important feedback from other commissioners tonight. I certainly hope that's something that is, you know, also conveyed to the county board as this, as the CIP moves forward. You know, buses that do stay in circulation all day, that's a different situation than school buses where you're used in the morning and in, you know, afternoon, evening, and there is that sort of charging time, you know, functionally in the middle of the day. So I think that is something we need to think about. You know, are we really emphasizing where we can get the most bang for our buck, so to speak, in terms of an impact on energy use and climate change and what we're really doing about car trips, you know, within this county? I mean, I think, you know, we appreciate that, I appreciate the detailed report and look forward to seeing where it goes. Anyone else want last words? Okay, thank you very much.
All right. And then, as you all know, I think the, you know, if you go to Arlington VA.us/cip, you can get the full document and everything else to read through, as much as you wanted the CIP.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Pfeiffer, I believe there was a second item this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is a second item. The second item is FBCN 24-00002, Use Permit for Preservation and Renovations to the Barcroft Apartments Buildings, number 47 and 48, located within Section 7 of the overall apartment complex. And we have Olivia Sontag here to provide a presentation.
Thank you. Give me just a second to pull up the presentation. All right. So again, Olivia Sontag with the Arlington County Planning Division. I'm joined virtually this evening by Rob Gibson from DES and Alex McMillan from our Housing Division. So this is the fourth Neighborhoods Form-Based Code Use Permit for Preservation and Renovations to existing Barcroft apartment buildings. So specifically, this use permit is for preservation and renovation to Buildings 47 and 48 within Section 7 of the overall complex, with modifications requested for setback and parking requirements associated with the underlying zoning. So as you're likely aware, staff is currently reviewing the Jer Lynch Master Financing and Development Plan, which is anticipated to be considered by the County Board this July. So while that long-term planning continues, they are, the Jer Lynch team is advancing these use permits. So again, this is the fourth use permit being considered by the Planning Commission and then the County Board this July. So these are all located within areas, within existing conservation areas within Barcroft and are not envisioned for redevelopment. And we're, the hope is that these renovations will deliver upgraded units in the near term. So as you can see here on the screen, the location of all four of those use permits, with the third one that was just approved this past week or so ago. So a little bit of site background, the zoning is RA 1426. This is within the Neighborhoods Form-Based Code. The GLUP designation is low-medium residential, and it is within an existing, the Neighborhoods Area Plan Conservation Area boundaries. It's about 2.5 acres of the total 60-acre site, 73 units, primarily one and two-bedroom within two existing buildings, and approximately 138 existing trees on site. So quickly here, you can see the location of the property within the Form-Based Code boundaries, and it's within the Neighborhoods area. And then zooming into the Central Subarea Regulating Plan, you can see it's located completely within the conservation area. It's not adjacent to any proposed redevelopment areas or any, is subject to any building envelope standards, but it does contain a natural preserve area and kind of the top triangular portion of the site, which the applicant is retaining. So here is the use permit proposal. Two of those buildings will be preserved, 73 units renovated. Those renovations will include items such as updated bathrooms and kitchens, new in-unit laundry, and then other upgrades such as to the HVAC systems. So after these renovations, there will be 51-bedroom units, three of those will be accessible units, 21 two-bedroom units, one accessible, and then two three-bedroom units, and those are newly created family units in this proposal. So all 73 units will be committed affordable units, that is a whole average up to 60% by for 99 years. This also includes the proposal for one outdoor amenity space, removal of just one tree, so 138 retained, and then they'll be providing three replacements, 32 standard parking spaces, and then they did create total four ADA spaces for those four accessible units that are being proposed. And then they are requesting modifications for these existing buildings to remain for both the existing parking and existing setbacks. And then the proposal will pursue National Green Building Standard Silver Certification. So this item went to the DRC and the HLRB twice in March and in April. The item went to the Form-Based Code Advisory Working Group on May 1. At the Form-Based Code Advisory Working Group meeting, members did express the desire for as many accessible units as possible. So following that meeting, the applicant did go back and took another look at the existing layouts and were able to provide four accessible units and reconfigure some of the existing layouts to provide two family-sized units. And we did send an update to the Advisory Working Group members with that change. So the next steps are Housing Commission this Thursday, and then County Board on June 15. And the recommendation from staff is to approve the use permit as proposed. And then the applicant is available virtually and does have just a very brief overview, if you'll allow it.
Sure. Applicant.
Thank you. Could someone make me a presenter real quick, so I could share my screen?
I can't, but someone can.
There we go. All right. Let me bring up a couple of slides here real quick. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Lauren Riley with Walsh Calucci, and we represent the applicant, Jerry Lynch Real Estate Partners. As Ms. Sontag mentioned, this is our fourth renovation use permit. It's our fourth time before you all, I'll aim to be brief with, with this presentation, but just wanted to highlight a couple of things for you with regard to this use permit. This is maybe a familiar diagram that you've seen before. It highlights each of the renovation phases that we've all gone through since July. And this is our, our fourth one here. It also delineates the existing buildings based on when they were constructed by color, as well as it shows the first phase of Barcroft here outlined in this blue dash, and then this red, this red dash is the second phase of Barcroft. The first phase came in the early 1940s, and the second phase was developed by another architect in the later 1940s and early 50s. So this is our first renovation use permit for buildings in that second phase that was within Section 7 that were constructed in the later 1940s. It's also our, our first instance where we believe we have original metal windows for these existing two buildings. I'll come back to that in a moment. And as Ms. Sontag noted, there's 43 units across these two buildings here today, and they're all one and two-bedroom units. As far as the exterior renovations to these two buildings that are proposed with this use permit, very, very similar to what you've seen before. We're cleaning and repairing the brick roofs, light fixtures, shutters, and other exterior elements of the buildings. We're removing and we're filling in openings where we're replacing those outdated heating and air systems. And then we're also creating some new openings for that modern equipment, as well as for the new accessible units that we're able to provide. And then similar to previous applications, we're also going to provide an amenity area in the courtyard. It will also be requesting those same modifications for setbacks and parking, and also for those new building openings and the cladding of wood trim that might be required by, by Virginia Housing. And here's an illustrative diagram of those two buildings. South George Mason Drive is on your right, and as you come up 13th Road South, here's Building 47 and that outdoor amenity area that I mentioned. And then right up at the hill is that long skinny building, Building Number 48. And those accessible units that I mentioned, two of them will be accessed here from this corner through these are the two accessible parking spaces that we've created. We'll be adding a ramp, which you'll see in a moment, up into the entrance, so they'll be able to access the building. We've also added a ramp to the backside, so they'll be able to access the courtyard. And then on Building 48 is where the other two accessible units will be located. They'll be able to access those units here off of this pathway on this side, as well as one over here as well, that you'll be able to see better in just a moment. On the left side of your screen, you can see the elevation of Building 47 as you come up 13th Road South. Here's that accessible ramp that I mentioned. Here's that accessible ramp that I mentioned, where folks will be able to enter those two units there. And here, the design team was able to convert existing one and two-bedroom units on that floor into accessible units. And then here's that ramp on the backside of the building. And then we turn to Building 48. This is a little bit different from what we've been able to do before. On this ground floor here, where this basement level now becomes exposed to, to the grade, there's an existing maintenance room on this floor. And the design team was able to take a portion of that maintenance room and convert into two accessible units. So you can see the new window openings here and, and door openings here. And then we originally proposed to add those two units overall to create 75 units instead of the existing 73. However, there is a provision of the, of the Form Based Code that does not, does not allow the applicant to add any additional units to the building beyond the, the amount that are existing. And this was discussed, as Ms. Sontag noted at, at the Advisory Working Group. So our design team went back to the drawing board with the goal of, of keeping the four accessible units. So we were able to do that by combining other units within Building 47 to create two family-sized units there. So we're able to keep the total, we're able to keep the four accessible units that are proposed and create two new, create two family-sized units and keep that overall unit count at 73 there. We discussed all of these elevations and the scope of the exterior renovations with the HLRB and the DRC back in April and May, as well as the AUG. And we're happy to have their support. We hope we have your support as well. I'm available tonight as well as Alice Hagaman with Jair Lynch, if you guys have any questions. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Any public speakers?
There are no public speakers for this item.
Okay. Any commissions wishing to be heard?
No commissions.
Okay. The matter is now with the Planning Commission. I understand AUG heard this. Did any, did Transportation Commission, anyone else hear this? Okay. Can we please have a report?
I, I think that the, the matter in fact did come to AUG. It was entirely uncontroversial. We've heard it from both presentations, and I just wanted to stress this point because it, it might end up being something that gets teed up at ZOCO at some point. There is an irony in this project, right? In that the purpose of the work being done at Barcroft Apartments is to increase the number of units and especially to increase the number of committed affordable units. And yet the board does not have discretion under our existing Form Based Code to permit these kinds of renovations in a way that would increase the number of units, right? We're just talking about these specific kinds of renovations that are before us, not the bigger project, right? And the people, the, the members of AUG, as I think others would agree, were perplexed by this and thought, well, this seems like counter to the intent. And is there a way that we can tee up fixing, you know, for lack of a better word, this particular problem? And I, I think that, you know, probably a lot of work has to be done, including asking whether or not it actually is a fix, if applied anywhere else, right? If we were to fix it here, would we be breaking things more broadly? This, this, this is homework that has to be done. But in the meantime, the applicant's solution is a very, very good one. While they can't increase the number of units overall, they have used space that, that is not being used for housing people to, to effectively increase the number of larger units. And they are to be commended and staff is to be commended for the work that, that was done to help facilitate that. Otherwise, it's, it's not for the AUG to recommend that the Planning Commission do this or that because AUG advises the county manager. But that is a notable discussion that, that, you know, might come to us in the form of some kind of inspired zoning amendment at some point.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any topics you wish to suggest for discussion tonight? Or I think this is straightforward enough, we can just have open discourse if you're comfortable with that?
I'm perfectly comfortable to recommend open discourse.
Okay. We'll have open discourse again. Commissioner Steiner, I saw your hand. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Okay.
Mine's a quick comment. I too am perplexed by this weird amendment there that says we can't add any more units. But I do want to say that I love the family-sized units. And I think that that's something that, that the applicant should consider doing more of as, as we move along in this process and really just developers across Arlington. I think that there is a lack, and the more of those we have, the more accommodating we can be for different types of needs. So that's all I'm going to say on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Steiner. Anyone else? Okay. I will just add that I'm, I'm very happy to hear that we were able to increase the number of accessible units. It's something we cover frequently. I know it often comes up. This would not go through an SPRC process, nor did it need to. But when it does come up, we often, you know, hear on how units can be made more, oops, accessible. And that's something that I'm pleased to hear. We were able to increase that for this project here. So good job applicant. Thank you. Daniel, Commissioner Weir, can I have a motion?
Oh, happy to. I recommend, or I moved the, that the Planning Commission recommend that the county board adopt the subject use permit in accordance with Columbia Pike Neighborhoods Form Based Code, Article 11.2 of the Zoning Ordinance Appendix B for Preservation and Renovation of the Barcroft Apartments Buildings, number 47 and 48 located within Section 7 of the overall apartment complex, with modifications pursuant to the Columbia Pike Neighborhoods Form Based Code for setback and parking requirements associated with the underlying zoning district for the existing buildings to remain subject to the conditions in the staff report.
Second, second.
Okay. Thank you for the second, Commissioner Patel. And we will move, is there any further discussion of the motion? Okay. We will move to a vote. Commissioner Steiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Commissioner Weir?
Aye.
Commissioner Lynn Tommy?
Aye.
Commissioner Harley?
Aye.
Commissioner Burkey?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger votes aye as well. Motion passes nine zero. Thank you very much. Have a good one. Yes, nine zero. Thank you. Mr. Pfeiffer, I believe there's sort of a third item, but really it's just an announcement.
Yes, we, we have a third item that was noticed on the agenda. This was SPLA 22-00054, Phase Developmental Site Plan Amendment for Site Plan Number 297 for the Pentagon Setter PDSP. This staff is recommending deferral for this. We are still working with the applicant on some tweaks to the design guideline documents, but those should be ready for July. So we will bring it back at that time. Thank you. That is correct.
Sorry, guys. I believe we have minutes. Sure. Yes. No, no, of course.
Madam Chair, I seek unanimous consent for approval of the May 6th and May 8th meeting minute, or meet, meeting minutes of the, of the Planning Commission.
Could you repeat the question? I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. I think you should, yes.
But I don't, Mr. Pfeiffer, so that's an interesting question because we only do unanimous consent and people who are not here don't raise an objection because of they weren't here. So it's just, I mean, I can do it, but I think that, that nobody's lodging objection because they were not there that night, right? Like when we were going individually and saying aye, 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 then you had to say abstain because I wasn't here. But since it's only unanimous consent, we
Not being an expert on Robert's Rules of Order, I think I trust you in this situation.
If, if Ms., if Giselle was here, we would know, right?
Right.
But she hasn't texted yet. So
All right, anyways, we'll do it.
No, we're doing unanimous consent. We've moved on. Okay. Hearing no objection. The motion minutes passed. Thank you. What? Okay. Any reports from various sub-commissions, anything from PR? PRFRC, thank you. Forgot the F. Nope. Okay, great. Transportation, anyway, yep, please.
Just a reminder, we have an LRPC Monday on Barcroft. So very timely. I see Olivia over there. So I strongly encourage everyone to attend. That's going to be very important as that's going to be teeing up. I think we're looking at an RTA possibly before the Planning Commission in July. So please, please attend. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Any other ZOCO, anything?
No, I haven't worked with Nick yet this month, so I'll email around.
That's fine. Daniel, Commissioner Weir?
And that one will be the big Barcroft project.
Right. Yeah, that, that is the, that is on the land use analysis. So that is, so we wrapped up the, I'll give a full report. So we wrapped up the working group. Daniel chaired most of the meetings. Thank you, Daniel. We wrapped that up and
And don't, don't forget to thank yourself.
I'll thank myself as well. And we had great staff working on that. I always tell Olivia and Matt how impressed and amazed and bewildered about how fast they're working along with Jair Lynch on this proposal. So this is a big meeting because we're going to be looking at the entire result of that analysis and working group. So a lot to discuss and so please attend because that's going to be kind of the most fulsome opportunity we're going to have as a Planning Commission to, to talk about it before it comes up for a request to advertise for, I believe, Form Based Code amendments and Master Transportation Plan Amendments in July.
My turn. See my lights on.
Okay, we'll come, I'll, I'll ask if we come back to them.
Go ahead. Please, go ahead.
What I had actually raised my hand for was to say that with, with Ms. Johnson not being present, I'll just note that I have been continuing to work with her on the, on the project of ironing out rollout for Commissioner emails. I know that she has reached out to a couple of commissioners at least to schedule sort of a, of a demo. Oh, thank you, Madam Clerk. I see you. I'll, I'll defer to you on that then. If, if, okay. All, all there is to say is that it seems like it's getting, you know, we, we've been doing some, I've been doing some testing, which is to say, sending emails back and forth with, with Giselle, and it seems to be working out. I seem to be getting everything. And, you know, the, I've emailed myself a couple of different ways to make sure that we're able to send out and receive back in. And I think that, that we're, we're turning the corner on this. So I expect that it will continue to be rolled out. We can only do briefings, you know, the staff can only do briefings to commissioners at a time. So I think the expectation is that, that Ms. Johnson is going to be reaching out to people in groups of two to do sort of the rollout. And there's a process, right? You get a link sent to you, you set up your two FA, your password, you set up your multi-factor authentication. And there's a policy document that I think that we need to have access to because it's, it's on the internet to which we do not have access. But that's all implementation and it's, and it's moving along.
Great.
And thanks to Ms. Johnson and the staff at Mr., Mr. Manley and his colleagues and staff as well.
Okay. Commissioner Patel?
Okay. So we don't have just one LRPC this month. We actually have two. The LRPC for Crystal Plaza Apartments is going to be scheduled for June 24th. So please mark your calendars. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. So I believe that, any staff updates we need?
No updates.
Major items? Okay, great. Well, then I believe we are in recess until Wednesday when we have one item on the agenda?
One item on the agenda, that's correct.
Thank you very much. See you all Wednesday. Thank you.